To approve the M and S engineering task force. All opposed? All right. Lieutenant Secretary.
Five zero.
Five zero. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll go on to the next items. CNA to reallocate 2016 Chevy pickup truck from code compliance for another department and to enact any necessary budget amendments to effect such urgent relocation. Counselor Nieto, a notice.
We've discussed the big woman extent earlier. And as I mentioned earlier, I think the code enforcement department is a great thing because as one of our citizens pointed out earlier, there's a lot of things we need to address within the city of Florville. What I do question is the approach we've taken, that we've taken and then not actually sitting down with counsel and going over a budget for this department. With the funds collected, you know, how are we going to allocate that money? If we're going to use somebody from a different department, transfer them over? I mean, I don't know. And Mr. Mitchell's done a great job. He's been with the city of Florville for a while. He's a, you know, outstanding citizen in our community. But I just don't know if having an officer, you know, at that position is the best thing. And I'm just saying from a cost standpoint. I understand he has the background of an officer, you know, and carries authority and all that great stuff. But if you're limited with a budget, $65,000, you know, and you can hire someone or create another job, you know, for this position, pay them X amount of dollars, get them a vehicle, get them all the equipment they need on an actual prepared budget, but I'd yet to see. I mean, everybody always questions us, you know, when we're spending money and, you know, what's our reasoning behind it? And why are we doing it this way when, like I said, none of this has been presented to us? And then again, on the police department, I don't know how it affected them. Are they going to have to hire another officer now? And then, you know, what are they paying that officer? How does that affect their budget? It just seems like a lot of these questions could have been brought to the council. We have, we have, you know, workshops with the four A, four B to discuss this. I mean, this should have been brought to us, you know, when we're going to allocate spending this money as opposed to just spending the $45,000 on the truck. That's, I just don't see any justification on that. I mean, if it's, this is a vehicle that equips the police department and follows their specs. Maybe this vehicle should be part of their fleet and not the code compliance.
Well, what we can do, because I did have a brief conversation with the attorney addressing that, we can take that, we can say that vehicle can go to the police department. We can make the funds so that we can transfer the funds appropriately. We can assign local ordinances. It's not just code enforcement. We can call it law, local ordinances to address that so that he is technically assigned because he is a full-time police officer. And then the funds that we have budgeted into the general fund to fund a full-time position can be transferred to that salary in the police department. We can do that or we can stick that in. If you don't, then adjust the organizational chart as well as this position to do that.
Does that help these new, I mean, they're not new enforcement. I mean, they're new to be enforced, but they're not new compliances. I mean, the public's not to be made aware of, I mean, what we're doing. I mean, you saw it was, there was an outrage of, we start telling people that they can't park their cars in the front. I know they went to the list.
Yes.
You know, just parking your car. So you imagine with everything else, I mean, it's required signage, you know, education, information, get the info, you know, get all that out.
Education, engineering, yes. It's all.
Getting all that stuff together and then, you know, making it aware. So, I mean, that's why I think, you know, back to the truck, if you park on that, is that, you know, there's so many other things that need to be done in this department to make it effective. And I just don't see how using, you know, what is the budget? How much money's in it from the, from the collective of the, the eight liners? How much do we have in there?
It was $60,000.
Yeah, $60,000. So we use, you know, $45,000 already.
It's plus.
Yeah. We have, we have 45 plus. So, you know, over 75% on one thing. And we still have a lot of other things to address. I just don't think that's the feasible way to approach this.
Okay. So what, or what I can do for budget purposes, we can bring it forward, reconstructure. I hear the concerns and issues that the council has, and we can make up a representation at that time.
Okay, so I'm not saying that Mr. Mitchell, I just, Mr. Mitchell in general, but an officer's not the right person for it. Let's, let's lay it out and see how it's going to work and, you know, present it to us and, you know, make it make sense to us.
And I hope it does make sense because one of the things you brought up in reference to the parking in the front of the vehicle, one of the things that we had was, and one of the things that happened was, who was this girl telling us I can't park on my grass? Well, when an officer says you can't park here, it has a lot more validity to why you can't park or you need to move your car. And so as we come across these issues with code enforcement in a lot of different, across the city itself, how the community is accepting it. And just to say, who is this person who can come and tell me not to do that? It's also the health issue because we are now doing health inspections, which we didn't do earlier before. When the police officer says, yes, he goes with the, or goes and if they have any problem with, county comes, he comes and they say, yes, you have to have your knee strapped. No, you have to be able to move those kind of things. The authority that it comes with, I think at this point, they're going to have that.
And this is more discussion on two C, if we're going to be about the reallocation of the vehicle and things of that nature.
Any other comments?
You're saying that the code compliance officer and the police officer are interchangeable?
They are one in the same. What we're focusing.
They're one in the same.
Yes, because it just, like, if you can imagine that the officer is assigned to traffic or an officer is assigned to a warrant officer. As you can see, once we assign the police officer to our warrants, our issue with our warrants disappeared. We have warrants to have reserved sometime.
Again, I'm going to write, if you want to do this, then we can come back to this item. If you want to put C above B to discuss this, because this seems to be what people want to discuss, not the reallocation of the vehicle to another department.
Well, actually, that's where I'm going towards in that. If it is interchangeable, and you're saying that there has to be a budget amendment made from the police department, it's all the same department. If it was used for police purposes, why do we have to?
Because that revenue came in under the eight liner for the purposes of code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
So I would have to say that that code enforcement fund went to the police department. And that, because that vehicle belongs to the police department.
Exactly.
So that vehicle belongs to the police department?
No.
Not technically right now, no. In fact, with this, if.
What do you mean tech, what you say technically?
No, it is not. And based on your CNA item for B, it could be, if that's what you want to decide.
But the PD would have to pay for it.
The funds would be transferred from what we received from the eight liners would be put into that budget and the police department would be allocated to the police department rather than allocated to the code enforcement budget. Our community development budget, whether technically called it.
What, what happened here on one A, two B, and two C? We just jumped the gun. We weren't focused. Things got out of whack and we had an issue. Plain and simple. We have to make those calls. So if you want to jump to C.
Mr. Hug, you suggested you jump to C, right?
Yeah, I would delay action on this one until after discussion on C.
Just because depending on what happens with that discussion, it would go into auditing things and that for the budget for this vehicle.
Do we need the motion to delay it or do we just go on?
No, you can do it as the presiding officer, move it on, and then we'll come back to this item for consideration.
All right. We'll put item B aside and go on to item C. Item C says, CNA regarding the code enforcement officer position on organizational chart, allocation of funds for salary, and hiring process for position. I, I started asking questions regarding this position and one of the things that I did, I called Judge Jimenez's office and got some information because my question is still, you know, since CJ left, was this a, a part-time position, two days out of the week, 16 hours out of the week?
When CJ left, we did transition because we needed to fill in. We didn't want to take away from the police officer until it became fully assigned June 1. But we're filling in, doing things such as that. Officer Dari is here because he does, she does supervision and she's speaking on behalf of the chief of how we transitioned to make this to go back and forth between the two.
Well, my question was on those officers that he was assigned, and this is nothing against you, Officer Mitchell. I'm just asking a question because I want to know if indeed we need a full-time position for code enforcement or should it be a part-time position?
We need a full-time position.
Because I looked at the records and since CJ left, and of course, the judges, the equipment crashed, so they don't have a record in December, but for, between January and, and to date, this, in June, they only have, there's only a record of five items. Three of them were warnings and the other two were actually, you know, citations.
Yes.
An item, five items.
But not all code enforcement efforts result in a ticket. Some of them result in letter writing and complaints, but Officer Mitchell can speak to that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
When I first got over here, I was part-time, two days a week for the first almost two months, or at least the first month. My focus was on the eight liners, inspecting and making sure all the paperwork was up to date. Since then, I know you show only five, and I got that paperwork as well. But these are the files since I've been here, of the letters that I've mailed out for either high grass, junk cars, whatever else needed to be addressed. Mr. Bay's situation to a carport last week. These are the files here. I have over 50 letters that I've written. That does not include the countless number of yellow cards I have placed on doors. That does not include, I do a lot of personal face-to-face. Before I knew who you were, you and I met, and maybe Councilman, Councilman can contest that I do a lot of face-to-face walk-ups. I try to encourage the citizens to voluntarily comply. I have walked the streets from the complete downtown area, went through every individual business, introduced myself. What we are doing, or what I'm trying to also do in addition to code enforcement, is a program that President Obama signed into action in 2015 for community-oriented policing. That's putting the police officer back into the community, gaining the trust of the community and the citizens back into the police department. One way I've done that is I've walked from Fourth Street to 181, from G Street down to D Street, and I've visited every home. I've, I've at least knocked and visited on every home. That takes time, as you can imagine. I can't tell you how many people I've actually spoke to personally to account for some of those other numbers because I do give a lot of face-to-face warnings. I did write a ticket, what, last week, last Tuesday? Or no, the Friday before that, for dogs. They started with over 20 dogs and it took me two months before I wrote them a ticket because I'm not here to hound and pound our citizens. That's, we're not going to build trust that way. We're not going to get voluntary compliance or build our city to make it more beautiful by just hitting them with fines over and over. But first time I went and visited the gentleman, he had over 20 dogs. A week later, I went back, he was down to somewhere near 15. So every time I went back, if I saw that he was making an attempt to fix the situation, I gave him more time to continue fixing it. Well, it came down to two weeks, he hadn't fixed, he had six dogs, he wasn't getting rid of no more, so I finally wrote him a citation.
What's the limit, officer?
Excuse me?
What is the limit?
Four dogs, sir. Do you give me a moment? Do you mind if I read something? It'll take probably one minute of something I wrote. 2015, President Obama initiated a program called Community Oriented Policing, which is the O B. Community-oriented policing is in fact the basics concept of having officers more tuned to the needs of neighborhoods along with the time to work, not only the crime problems, but associated problems that contribute to the crime issues, many of which fall under local ordinances. When I'm out there speaking with people face-to-face, getting out of my car, I'm learning about the neighbors, I'm learning about the drug houses. I'm able to pass on that information to the other street officers or to my superiors. Many departments across the nation are developing community-oriented policing with the intention to regain the trust of the public and our officers on the street. The majority of community policing officers enforce state, local, and city laws and ordinances. They work regularly with City Hall, code enforcement, and community development in solving problems for the city and their citizens. That is what we're trying to do. Myself, Sergeant Fowler, we had a meeting for Neighborhood Watch Program last week. Unfortunately, at the last minute, they had to cancel. But that's part of what I see code enforcement and in this position does. It's, it's not just going out slamming these people. I have noticed a lot of positive feedback as it being a police officer in the position because a lot of them, they're like, I didn't care what she said. I got that a lot, walking the streets and talking to people. Man, that lady was nuts. I didn't care what she did, said, what she said she was going to do. But you, I take a little more serious because I have a badge.
As a matter of fact, Madam Mayor, I took a ride with Mitchell. Can you recall that?
Yes, sir.
It was good, right?
I appreciate it.
Professional, well-mannered, he took care of business, no problem. I supported her before and I support the PD. And I commend you, sir.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, and the issue wasn't that, it was just to see if there was a mission.
Exactly, but that's, that's.
Work for a full-time officer. That was my point.
Okay. You do that, and I apologize. I think I'm what I'm.
So the warning, how many times do you issue a warning before you give them a citation?
That's up to discretion, obviously. I will send out a letter. I've since revamped it. I give them now seven days to comply. I will go back and check. If nothing is done, I send them another notice. And then I will send a final warning of you're going to receive a citation. So on a regular high-grass yard, junk car, any situation that we occur, you're probably looking at minimum 30 days before we're able to actually issue a citation. Now, these numbers can all be adjusted. You know, we can drop it down to a three-day grace period. We can drop, I mean, whatever, because there is no guidelines to that in the, in the ordinances.
So since there were only three warnings listed in this timeframe, were there, do you document all the warrant, the final warnings or you don't?
That's what all these are.
No, on the rest, on, I mean, because these came from the judge's office.
Yeah, those were on COPSING. Now, I did not always have COPSING in my vehicle.
Running through there, Mayor. So a lot of it, we don't use COPSING or he doesn't use it. If he's going door-to-door, he may hit 10 houses before he goes back to his unit. And it's all mobile, so it's in his patrol unit. So most of the, his, what he does, not necessarily documented until he writes a citation possibly, and then it'll be documented.
I did talk to COPSING last week when they were here installing the computer into the truck about being able to document, writing citations, so forth for this type of environment. They are looking into it. There are some technical difficulties on, on running some 27s and 28s, so we've got to look through those. I'm sorry, licenses and license plates. But the rest of the system, I'm able to, and the activity button, the report button, I would like to start using COPSING in reference to what it's used for in, as a recording system so that everything is put online, it's backed, it's saved, and so forth and so on.
But you understand that if you are going to be doing this audit, it's whatever, you're no longer going to be a police officer?
Negative, sir.
You are going to be a police officer?
Yes, sir. I am a Texas State Commissioned Police Officer. I am commissioned by the Florville Police Department in this great city. Now, what that gives you with me out there is I walk up to a door and all of a sudden I'm there for high grass, but I notice that that is Mr. X, who I know has a warrant. I can turn around and immediately make an arrest on the spot. Also, while I'm driving around, if I see a local ordinance violation that we just passed, like the cell phones, I can make the stop and issue a citation for that as well. I'm always a police officer.
So what is your title here at the Hill?
The, it, that is in play. We, community police officer is what I have been introducing myself as because I'm, as I stated, I'm trying to get back out in the community and.
Okay, so you're still carried by the CVA?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I say, I'm Officer Mitchell with Florville Police Department. I do community policing. Is how I introduce myself.
Maybe Ms. Fowler, Mr. Ortiz can answer. Is your job title part of the CVA?
As an off, as a police officer.
As a code compliance.
As long as he's a police officer for the city of Florville, he's under the contract.
Exactly.
The title.
Code compliance.
Counselor, the title is not there. You're, like, I'm not necessarily spelled out, only as covered in being a sergeant. I'm a police officer with the state of Texas, covered under the Florville CVA.
I don't believe we have him listed as warrant officer.
She's covered under the contract. She's a full-time police officer for the city of Florville, just like he is. Right. As long as he's commissioned as a.
And where's the money? How is the money budgeted? Is the PD paid for?
Well, during the time he was doing it part-time for the city and part-time for the police department, when he was going back and forth and doing two days over here, administrating, doing local ordinances, he pulled the money out of the budgeted amount to reference that and transferred over to the police department. And when he was there, he was doing it full-time. So that's what we were making back and forth. So then we could eat up some of that salary. It was transferred over.
So we haven't even budgeted this position yet?
It's a combination between the vacancy that we had for code enforcement.
I said, we haven't budgeted this position.
Officer Mitchell was existing.
I know as a police officer, but not as a code compliance, correct?
It was a vacancy in the code enforcement officer that was CJ. She was here before, she was code enforcement officer.
But she was a part-time officer, correct?
She was full-time. She was a full-time.
Full-time, so.
Civil.
So she was getting his salaries?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so it wasn't budgeted, correct?
No, it wasn't. There, funds are being moved around now. Council should have known about all that. That is why.
I'm just new.
Right.
Counsel, I'm just asking a question.
You understand that.
I mean.
Okay, Counsel, if, if Mayor, if I may.
I like, yes, also I'd like for you to explain the hiring process for this position.
Okay. The hiring process was when we wanted to move Officer Mitchell to be a code enforcement officer, the police department had a list, they worked off of a list, but they didn't only hire, there was not a post.
But that's for a police officer position, correct?
But did you post it in the city?
The police department took care of everything for posting and reference to the position that was filled. So Counsel, if I'm hearing you correctly, I understand, I may have overstepped my bounds, as Counselor Nieto said, I understand spanking my hands as a Councilman Ortiz wants to do. In my zillions, I may have not paid close attention, but I will be paying close and strict, strict attention to the $25,000. What I was trying to accomplish is to get an officer, a position that we need to have filled so that we can go ahead and start doing the things that we need to do.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't just be, his salary is way over $25,000 too. You're making some decisions that.
His, his salary was already budgeted for.
In the police department, correct?
In the police department, which is.
Not for ordinances, correct?
And there was a vacancy.
If there was a vacancy, why was, why wasn't everybody notified? So that way everyone can apply to the position.
We advertised for the code enforcement position. We did not find anybody in this area that was qualified to do so.
Did we have applications still? Do you have applications?
Yes. But none had code enforcement experience, which is what we needed. CJ, when we hired her, she had code enforcement experience. We got hired, no one had code enforcement experience. And again, maybe it was in my zillions to fill this position. It came about when we were doing the eight liners, that we need to have someone to go up and do the code enforcement, and it just seemed to work, especially since that was such a high-key issue that we want to make sure that we've done by the numbers.
Do you recall how many applications we received?
No, I do not.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To start things off, the PD is short, one officer, prior to his movement.
They already hired someone, right?
No, no, no.
So.
Before he was moved, there was a shortage, correct?
We, we actually, that's why we utilized him two days a week here and kept him on.
Right. My, my question is, was there a shortage of PD officer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we moved Officer Mitchell over here, so it makes it harder, more over time, correct?
No, sir, we adjusted shifts.
More hours.
For our officers, but there wasn't more pay.
Over time.
No, sir, we didn't use overtime. That's what I'm saying. We adjusted our shifts so that Officer Mitchell was available to the city today.
But he was working over here?
Yes, sir. But we adjust our shifts, we adjust our officers that we have in place so that they, they split their shift.
So, so in, in reality, it's getting worse.
What? What's getting worse, though?
The PD.
No.
We are short, yeah, yes, ma'am. You can move personnel around and everything, which.
I think what Counselor Ortiz is saying is when you move shifts around, is I mean, you have less coverage at some times than you had previously?
Yeah, of course, of course.
That's what I think.
But we're utilizing the same, we're utilizing the officer without any extra.
I know what exactly, Madam Madam. Right.
Ms. Turner, I mean, there's a lot being said, like, you know, move people, move people here, there, short, CVA, everything else. Can we just, like, we talked about earlier, get a budget for the code compliance department? What is, I mean, Officer Mitchell shares some things on what his vision is, it sounds great, and with his involvement with the community-oriented policing, all that good stuff, but get something in writing, you know, where's, what are we going to do with this department? What are we looking to accomplish? What is our budget to do that? And then the same stuff with the police department, how does his role play as a police officer? I understand you're always a police officer, but how does it affect the police department? You know, does that change their hours? Does that benefit that other officer? I mean, we're operating on a strict budget as it is, you know, for the entire, entire city, you know, with sales tax down, everything else. So how does this affect everything as a whole? As opposed to just, we're just kind of just doing all this right now and I don't think we're really giving anything.
And get it back to you, and we can bring back some of the people, we can make sure that county is here, as well as, as you said, we can talk about all those issues for what we want to have, what we've done already to date and what we plan on doing in the future and we have to do with the council.
Yeah, well, I feel the same way because.
I feel the same. There's, there's.
Remember, you're shifting people around and stuff and if you're hurting another department from it, you know, I don't know if I could even say this, you know, you've got some people that are supposed to be working on the streets, working here in the, in the, in-house here at the, at the, what do you call it?
What? No, no, code compliance.
Administrative service.
Administrative service.
So did we fill that position when Mr. Mitchell came over here to the city?
Yes.
So he created a vacancy at the city, at the police department?
That's correct. That's correct. So we are back up to where we were.
Well, no, not really. Because if his, his salary's coming out of the PD, we added one day.
Exactly. We added one more.
That's my, my, it's being offset by the open vacancy in code compliance.
I'm almost certain the salary that TJ had is not the same salary that Mr. Mitchell has.
No, it's not. He has not.
It's not, it's not exactly that.
Oh, that's, that's his, his question. Is it the same?
No, sir, it's not. I said no. I said no.
But I think, I think Councilmen, if they provide a budget, give us some information, they don't, not put anything together.
And I can bring it up for it. And I hear your question, and I'll make sure that I have the answer to give to your question.
And, and can you please have the community director and the controller and everybody here so we can get this act right? It's a chaos here.
I'm looking at it as a chaos.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
It's different? I don't know.
It's a big difference.
It's different. It doesn't necessarily mean chaotic, but I.
It doesn't necessarily mean chaos, but I...
Madam Mayor, can we entertain a motion?
Please.
I still believe we tabled item 2C.
A second.
I have a motion in a second to table, 2C. Any comments? A lot of them. Okay, please step up and give your name and comments.
Tim Bayes, I'm back. I think it's great that y'all tabled this for the discussion. The value of a sworn officer in the position of code compliance officer is not... You can't even measure the value there. I have a state-certified police officer and a state-certified structured firefighter and a state-certified arson investigator. People think, "Well, why does a fireman need a gun?" I investigate fires. He's gonna investigate code compliance complaints. Having the sworn officer there, even though the cost is going to be more than a non-sworn officer in that position, is of great value. Not only do you have a vehicle that isn't a cop car going around town and on the lookout for crime and criminal activity, but the theory of community policing is being embraced by every city in the nation. We have initiatives where we go out to the east side where there was a shooting the night before. They don't want S.A.P.D. to go out there. They want an arson investigator to go out there, because they don't see him as a cop. Talk to the people, find out what's going on. Then we go back and we talk to the officers and let them know what's going on in their area. There's such a negative connotation with the police in that area. They utilize us to gather information for them. So even though it's gonna cost a little more money...
Sorry, you have one minute.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
So you want to wrap it up?
Yes. Even though there's an increased cost there, the value is... Offsets the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Tom Robles. My question to you, why did you sign that check? It's not her fault. Why did you sign a check?
I will answer that.
I mean, I...
No, I will answer.
Do you give it to the gentleman, Mr. Robles?
I do.
Okay, we're on 2C. We're not talking about the truck, though.
Earlier, we weren't discussing the purchase.
We're not talking about the truck. It's black and white. We're on 2C.
Table 2B, yes.
Black and white. We're on 2C.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nick Nissen. I live in Florisville. I am all for code compliance. I hope you guys pass it. We had two of them from the city I came from. One was a police officer, non-weapon-carrying. One was a police officer, weapon-carrying. All it did in our city in 42,000 was lower our drug problems, lower our prostitution problems, fix any gambling problems. And we started getting refrigerators, junk cars, tires off the side of streets, and the community became beautiful. That's what you guys really want to do here. Look at the part you want to do. So code enforcement, we had one unmarked. We have one marked card with a weapon. He walks up on somebody who has a drug house accidentally. You think you're gonna be friendly to him when he's doing code enforcement on refrigerator or junk car? He needs to be a police officer to protect himself, to help our community.
I do.
Thanks, sir.
Madam Mayor, there seems to be some discussion that we're trying to do away with the position. The discussion is not about that. Obviously, just with the discussion we're having here, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. We're not disputing the position or the validity of it.
Yeah, we're disputing the $45,000.
No, that's not your main... As we... It's hard to keep track. They're kind of interwoven, so, yeah. It's all interwoven.
And of course, my comments were related to, because of the information I had received from the office on the number of warnings and citations. You know, do we really need one? That's why I brought it up, so... And, I mean, do we need a full-time as opposed to a part-time? Okay, so any other comments?
If I may? I've never fully answered that question for you. Yes.
Thank you.
I can't even tell you how many calls I get throughout the day. When I come back on a weekend, I've got voicemails. I've got seven, eight, nine, ten calls of places I need to go out and check. I'm eventually rotating around, looking around, and then coming back and writing the letters. It is definitely a full-time job, if not for 2D.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I get one more, Jim?
If it's on item C, sir.
Yes. Yes. Is this city military-friendly?
Is the city what?
Military-friendly. And the reason I'm saying it, because when you put an application or you put out there for hiring, there's a lot of military out there. They're military police officers, and they also have background in, you know, compliance. And that's another, you know, that's why I'm asking if they have, you know, that they're also, you know, reaching out to other communities like Fort Sam and Lakeland and those stuff.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So we have... Yes, we need a vote? Where are we? We're still on item C, right?
We have the first and the second. We have the first and the second.
To take.
Yes. Okay, so...
We're on 2C?
Yes, we're on 2C. We have a motion. We have a second. We have citizens' comments. So now we vote. We postpone it until we get a report, right? Based on budget and a plan to proceed with this.
Exactly.
Okay? All of us in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go back to item B, right? Right there, we...
We'll go back, and since there was no movement on where the position of the officer is and order and things like that, then I would say this should probably be taken as well. That's Counselor.
Okay, may I have a motion to take? A motion to take? Second? Do you need discussion on the table? Okay, discussion? Citizens' comments, right?
Yes, ma'am. Tim Bayes, again. The vehicle's already bought. It's not a cop car. It's a code-compliance vehicle. He's gonna need that vehicle to haul ladders. He's gonna need that vehicle to haul equipment, to do inspections. When we legitimize the position, get it budgeted, the vehicle's already there. It's already paid for out of the money that was taken from the A-liners. Leave the vehicle there. Maybe next time we spec a vehicle, maybe we put a little more thought into it. We don't get a four-wheel drive. However, the police package is a good thing. The police radios, the computers, the radar, all that. If a sworn officer's gonna be in it, they need to have all that equipment. A four-wheel drive, maybe not so much. I don't know why it was specced in that manner. However, it was bought as a code-compliance vehicle. The money's already spent. It's paid for. Get this guy to work. He's done a great job already. He's helped me, along with the city manager, Mr. Hug.